Doing my thing, I got my little note.
She's ready, are you ready?
We're ready, and the camera's live. Uh, good evening, everybody, this is September sixteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Yeah, it is.
Nine.
If you would please leave it, I'd appreciate it.
What did I say?
The sixteenth.
I don't remember addressing James, but anyways, he always gets up after he gets his raise. Anyways, this is September ninth, two thousand, uh, two thousand nineteen. Uh, we've got a proclamation of retirement for Todd Hall, police officer. Man. Yeah, we appreciate all the hard work there. Uh, number two, we're gonna have a proclamation for recovery month, and Nicholas Foss is gonna be coming for that, and we also have a mayor's award, very looking forward to the ashes coming down. Uh, number four is a resolution approving an amended agreement with, between the city of Burlington and Burlington, West Burlington, area Chamber of Commerce for the use of the Port of Burlington Building by the Chamber. Uh, Chelsea May? Well, go ahead, James, you can go first then.
Well, uh, Chelsea had been here a few weeks back, requesting, uh, the ability to take over the space that was formerly occupied by the Iowa store, uh, to be used, uh, for the Convention and Visitors Bureau for the Welcome Center. Um, the council had been agreeable to do that, and what you'll have before you, both the, both of the next two items, uh, one is amending the agreement to, to reflect the change of space, not changing the time of the contract, but, um, just recognizing that, uh, their space would, would have a little bit larger footprint. And as we went through the process of getting that ready, uh, one of the things that was noted by the city attorney was is that we don't have a actual rental agreement in place. So the second item that you see on, or the, the second resolution that's on there is a, an actual lease agreement for the space to coincide with, uh, with the contract with the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Um, I think that, uh, it's been a while since I read through the amended agreement, but the agreement is amended to incorporate not just this change, but we had amended it before, uh, to change the number of meetings, uh, down to every, every other month instead of every month. Uh, so that's reflected in the language as well. Did you have anything else, Chelsea?
Thank you, covered it, pretty straightforward.
Could you come to the microphone? I'm sorry, we didn't hear you.
No, it's pretty straightforward.
Would you introduce yourself, please?
Thanks, John. We just wanna make sure we do things right down here, that's all.
Chelsea LaRue, Executive Director of the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Um, I think Jim pretty much covered it, nothing really, um, out of the ordinary, just, I guess, formal process, so, for us to move into the former Iowa store space.
Right on.
Is that it?
Counsel, are you guys satisfied?
Yeah, we guys be selling different things, I mean, you're gonna shake it up a little bit.
That is our goal, we'd like to incorporate merchandise, um, we don't really have a timeline yet in there of what merchandise, um, but as visitors come in, the staff and volunteers are kind of asking them what they're looking for, so we can kind of incorporate what they are looking for, and we'll slowly start adding those items there. We do have postcards, um, those are selling quickly, and, um, working on maybe getting linen wines in there, and, um, Henry Boland's, um, beef sticks and stuff like that from the elk farm.
They're elk sticks.
Yes, sorry, elk sticks.
Thanks for the correction.
Yes.
Okay, awesome.
John, John wants to know if you're selling Fireball Run t-shirts down there as well.
Uh, those all got destroyed in the flood.
They did?
Yes, so, they are all gone.
I've heard if it was in the floodwater, it was destroyed.
Yes.
Thank you, Chelsea Bay.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, number five is a resolution approving a commercial lease agreement between the city of Burlington and the Burlington, West Burlington area Chamber of Commerce for exclusive use of the portions of the Burlington Port Building. Are we satisfied?
Yeah.
Okay, that takes us to the consent. Chelsea May, you can leave if you want, I think, maybe.
See you guys later.
All right, peace out.
Bye.
Uh, the proposed consent, number one is a resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. We good?
Good.
Number two is a resolution approving an agreement between the city of Burlington, Iowa, and Alliant Energy Incorporated for the all-night lighting service at the dead end of Sunset Avenue. Nick McGregor.
Good evening. Uh, the request in front of you came from, uh, property owners in the area. Um, we have a little bit of an interesting situation where Sunset was part of a planned development, and then, at some point, it was kinda severed off. Uh, the yellow light is a current light on the corner, um, and there's a request to add another light. Uh, that, the, the red dot, there's an existing pole, um, it'd be my recommendation to add a light there. Uh, there's no cost, cost for installation because the pole is there, um, it would be seven twenty-five dollars, or seven dollars and twenty-five cents a month, that would be added to our Alliant bill. Um, it covers quite a bit of area, so I think that we need to add that in that area, so.
Questions for Nick?
No.
No.
You get a haircut over the weekend?
Yeah, on Friday.
We're real proud of you, he's got something coming up.
Yeah, he's got something.
Number three is a resolution approving fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, street finance report, road use tax. Stephanie Stucker, come on down.
So, this is the annual report that's due, um, September thirtieth, um, by the state of Iowa. So basically, you can see from the report, it's just recapping what's going on with our road use fund, and also what we're spending our other street monies on. Um, and then, what you do is, each time we bond, I separate what the bond amount is going to streets, and then that's tracked here, too. Um, but it lists the projects that were completed in the fiscal year nineteen, all the different revenues we've got in for grants, um, of course, how much road use tax we received for the year. And then we track all the equipment that's been purchased out of the road, with road use funds, and the state, like I said, they have a big database that all this equipment is listed at, so. You may have any questions?
How long have we been doing this, Steph?
Eight years now.
Eight years.
You're gonna miss it, aren't you?
Since I joined the council, that was my idea. I don't lie about Steph, but I get up here, it's gonna be great. All right. Uh, thank you, Steph, are we satisfied with that, guys? I would think so. All right. Number four is a resolution approving purchase of HESCO flood barriers from Two Rivers Bank and Trust. Nick McGregor.
Uh, the resolution in front of you would authorize purchasing, uh, approximately a hundred and thirty, uh, combination of the regular size that we use, uh, for deployment, and then some smaller ones. I think they're about two and a half, three foot tall, um, from Two Rivers. It also includes a couple rolls, a plastic roll that we use. Uh, they've had these HESCO barriers, they purchased them back when they used to do their own flood protection work around the bank. Uh, they still have them on hand, and they don't really need them anymore, um, since we, we typically will provide them, uh, flood protection, uh, so, they are offering the HESCO barriers to us at fifteen thousand dollars, uh, which comes out to a hundred and fifteen dollars per HESCO barrier. Um, our purchase price from HESCO is three hundred and fifty dollars per, uh, so it's a, it's a savings, I mean, yes, they're depreciated some from age, they are shrink-wrapped, so I'm not too concerned about their integrity. Um, however, when it comes to FEMA re-implacement, why, you know, why did we replace the hundred and seventy from HESCO versus this? Uh, I don't know that FEMA replaces, we didn't get that answer, uh, replaces second-hand purchasing, and also, I'd like to purchase or replace the ones that we lost with new ones. Not that we won't supplement our, our stock and inventory with these, um, but...
Plus, they're big.
Yeah, we have, I mean, we have some of the regular-sized ones, but then I also, I think the smaller type ones could be used around the depot, um, in, in, you know, future years. So I think that, I think this is a pretty good discount, we'll use, uh, the same flood account, ultimately, we get reimbursed for all the staff time that we put in, um, so we don't get directly reimbursed from FEMA, but some of the funds that we get from, uh, from our staff time will ultimately pay for these.
I think half price is great, Nick. Now, would these look physically different from the new ones? I wanna make, because...
To the naked eye, to you...
They may not be...
To you, no, I mean, to our staff, they, there's, there's different pins in the older ones than what the new ones have. They're a little bit different, but they're the same basic setup.
Cause I was talking with Dave Lobsec about this very issue, that we really, at this point in time, don't have a way to tell when they're, when they're dated, when they don't work properly, there's not a way to mark them. Is there a way to mark them, so we know which ones are older? We just keep a tighter eye on them? There is?
No.
Oh, I thought you were saying yes.
No, I'm sorry.
Okay.
These, these haven't been used, right? I'm sorry.
They haven't been used.
Okay, so, I mean, they're new, let's see.
As you use them, and you go to tear them down and, and, and store, and make a decision what you're gonna do with them for, if you can use them again or get rid of them, you evaluate those for the, the material and for the metal.
And actually, they, we used to be able to rehab them, we used to send the ones that were kinda broken, and we used to send them to HESCO, and they would rehab them, and they would certify them. So when they send them back to us certified, they feel confident, they don't do that anymore. These have never been used, um, so...
I didn't know if they broke down, like running shoes, never been used, but they sit around and the life does depreciate.
They've been, they've been sitting in cold storage on, in shrink wrap. Um, they should be fine, I mean...
Just a question that crossed my mind.
No, they, they'll be fine, I, I'm not too worried about them.
I think it's a smart move.
Yeah.
Half price is good.
When we first had talked with the bank, and they were offering them to us at their original purchase price, that was one that we didn't have quite as much incentive, just because of the issue you were mentioning. I mean, they look like they're in good shape, but we do have concern, you know, you, you wanna make sure that you, you don't have a product that doesn't, isn't gonna last as long.
And we'll, and, and on just, on putting them out to try and protect, we'll put them in a strategic place. I mean, we'll know that these are the ones that we don't want.
Put them in the less vulnerable spot.
The weight-bearing HESCO, we'll try and put them on top, just, just for a, you know, sanctity of mind that they're, you know, they're the used ones, or the, the older ones.
Okay.
The only other thing I'd, I'd point out, uh, as we did talk about how we're gonna pay for these, um, we do anticipate that as we get reimbursed from FEMA, because of all the time that's involved, uh, for employees to have done a lot of the cleanup, that we should get a, a reimbursement amount that is more than what our out-of-pocket costs are for materials, uh, so there should be cash left over. But any spot where we don't have cat, enough cash, get reimbursed from FEMA to cover something, it's ultimately the general fund that picks up any cost there. So there is that risk, but I don't think that that...
This is still for HESCOs, though, and we're still...
For the price, this is a good price.
So, I mean...
Till it's done, and even afterwards, we're gonna use them, so.
Even to a certain degree, I mean, there's no plan for the depot, so even if...
We're gonna need HESCOs.
We were fully built out, we'll still have some need for them.
You guys satisfied? We're satisfied with this guy.
Thanks, Nick.
Okay. So, uh, number five is a resolution approving the purchase of temporary construction easements for the two thousand nineteen Locust Sewer Separation. Mr. McGregor.
Uh, this is the third installment of resolutions for the Locust Sewer Separation, uh, of the temporary easements. Um, it, it takes a while to get them all wrangled up, all the, all the citizens that you have to get the, the easements from. So this is the last set of them, you know, this project has already started, but we haven't really gotten into the whole alleyway and easement type work, so, that's what this is, it's twenty-one hundred fifty-four dollars, um, paid for with sewer money ultimately, uh, I think financed through SRF, so.
Questions?
None.
Okay. Thank you, Nick. Uh, we have a public hearing set for October seventh, a consideration of a sale of property locally known as sixteen oh seven Osborne Street, city of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions, it's gonna make somebody a lovely home. And then we have a consideration of inordinance vacating and selling a portion of right-of-way located adjacent to eighteen fifteen to eighteen forty-five Des Moines Avenue, Burlington, Iowa. Do I move forward, do you wanna say anything on that, Mr. T? Okay. Uh, discussion items, number one is chapter fifty-eight Noise Control Ordinance, CDK. What? Chief, Dennis K.
Come on, keep up, Annie.
CDK.
No, it's okay. Uh, what I did is put together a little presentation, the question come to me about the, uh, noise control ordinance specifically for permitting, uh, for like live bands, live entertainment outside. Uh, during RagBri, we had some, uh, uh, some businesses that weren't aware, uh, that they needed a, a permit to do it, and I contacted some of those, and, and the permit time for some of those businesses, uh, ends at nine PM, and I heard some, uh, I guess some questions about that nine PM time at that time, and then, uh, one of the council members, uh, brought it up as a, as a, uh, discussion, and, and wanted some clarification on it. So, uh, hopefully, this will give you a, just a little bit of clarification on, on some parts of the ordinance. I didn't include everything, there's, uh, mostly just dealing with permitting. Uh, I left out a lot, you'll see and hear about decibel readings, to not bore you to death with, uh, certain decibels for this and certain decibels for that, to, uh, make our case when it comes to writing somebody for a noise ordinance violation. So, the noise disturbance prohibited, it says, "No person shall make cause, continue or cause to be made or continued except as permitted. I know, any noise disturbance in excess of the limit for such noise established herein." And I, I hit some key words there, they talk about a person, so I'm looking, when we go to these, we look for the person that's responsible for the noise, and then, uh, we, we look at the definition for, uh, noise disturbance. So when that's defined, uh, we talk about a noise or disturbs a reasonable person of normal sensitivities. Uh, so, when we respond to the area, this is kind of what, uh, we're, we're dealing with when it comes to that. Noise-sensitive areas, uh, in the ordinance means, uh, things that are, you know, like schools, hospitals, churches, nursing homes, things of that nature, and of course, the public library, we don't want Rhonda upset.
Nobody likes her when she gets upset.
And like I said, I picked some of the main definitions out that I thought pertain to what, the topic that, that came into question, so. A person means any person, firm or corporation, so when we're talking about the businesses, uh, that would be affected by having the, having a, a band or music or entertainment outside of their, uh, business, uh, that would, that would definitely define them. Uh, the real property boundary, uh, that's that imaginary line along the ground surface, and it extends vertically up, which separates real property, so it's the next property over, uh, from that or adjacent to, uh, those businesses that would, they would need to cross. Some of the exceptions, uh, that we, uh, looked at in there, construction has come up in the past, uh, when you talk about, uh, like somebody that would be sawing concrete or running a jackhammer, uh, we've had issues with that in the past, I know, and it kinda limits those kind of, uh, activities there. Motor vehicle radios, which was something that we typically deal with, like, uh, in traffic and on patrol, would be fifty feet from that vehicle, like if music is coming out of there, and I know we've all heard it sitting at the traffic light, uh, somebody next to you just really pounding on the music, and, uh, we look at those, the, that section of it, uh, for, uh, those kind of exceptions, that they can have music in their car, it just can't go more than fifty feet. Uh, amplified music, uh, used in non-residential districts in conjunction with a civic or religious celebration. So that's another exception, those are some of the, and like I said, these are some of the examples, uh, that would happen, like, uh, a civic event, uh, such as, uh, Steamboat Days, some of those things that go on, uh, that is, that is available to everyone in the community, and, uh, religious celebrations, of course, is in there. Unamplified live music, uh, sponsored in whole or in part by government entity, there's another portion that kind of, uh, uh, does that, yes.
Can I ask you a question about twelve, chief? So, on a, on an event like that, they still have to conform to a certain norm as far as when they shut down, correct? They still have to talk to you about that?
It would be part of that permitting process, the exception.
Part of the permit, okay.
Yeah. And then number sixteen, uh, domestic tools like lawnmowers, snowblowers, when used between the hours of seven and nine o'clock. Some of the things, and I included in your packet, some, uh, I contacted other, uh, law enforcement entities, chiefs, and such, and I basically looked online, it's all online, their ordinances as ours are, and, uh, looked up their noise ordinances, and they, some of them go into greater detail than us, when it comes to lawnmowers, snowblowers, they go into other, uh, power tools, and, and so you can get carried away with, with the definition on, on how far down you wanna drill it down, so, uh, there's a whole host of, of different ordinances out there, some of them have nothing in their ordinances that would, uh, cover this when it comes to permitting. And these are the regulations, uh, that, and the permitting that we do, says, "Except for activities open to the public and for which a permit has been issued by the city under this section," so it says that you need to have a permit, "No person shall show, operate, play," uh, all those things there, amplified music is one of those things, sound trucks, uh, I haven't seen a sound truck in a number of years, so, uh, I don't know if we have that. The closest thing that I saw was the ice cream truck, there used to be an ice cream truck going around town. Um, as to create the noise disturbance, we go back to the, uh, definitions across residential real property boundaries or outdoors with a noise sensitive, or a noise-sensitive area like I defined. Or, uh, they would need a permit, uh, if it creates a noise disturbance fifty feet from the device, of course, when it's operated in a motor vehicle, on a public right-of-way or a public space, or in a boat on public waters. And another reason they would need a permit is as to create a noise disturbance for any person other than the operator of the device, when operated by any passenger on a common carrier. So that would be like on a city bus, probably. And it continues on, uh, section two, uh, "No person shall use or cause to operate any of those things also," the amplified music is in there, uh, referred to as "sound equipment," which is defined, "upon a public street or upon any premises, public or private, if the sound therefrom is plainly audible from any public street or public place within the city unless the person obtains that permit or complies with the conditions imposed by the permit." And that'll be important, uh, when, when we start talking about the four types of permits here, and, and what we're allowed to do, uh, on those permits, and how, how, uh, us as the police department are expected to, uh, enforce that, because we're here twenty-four seven, so, they're probably not gonna call City Hall at eleven o'clock when the sound's so loud, so. Um, the last thing is complies with all other app, applicable provisions of this section, so. There's four permits, it's type A, type B, type C, and type D. Typically, what we deal with, uh, here is, uh, would be type A, is what I typically deal with. Like I said, we don't see a lot of the sound trucks, uh, the parks, we see a few of those for events out in the parks, but not a lot for, on, uh, public or, or, uh, school grounds, but I'll, uh, work through each one of those. The type A permit may be issued by the sound equipment emitting music, which is typically what it is, human speech, and there's the sixty decibels, which, uh, you know, we do have a sound meter that we can use, we have one for the department, so we'd have to go get it and then effectively make our case. Uh, across the real property boundaries, we, we would probably first establish is the music loud going across there, uh, annoying, and then go with the, uh, decibel readings. So, uh, I pointed out here, uh, this, uh, city zone for non-residential use, and only between the hours of nine o'clock and nine PM. You'll notice in the other three, when I get to those, that, uh, it allows it to go later than nine PM to eleven PM on those permits. Uh, and, uh, thinking back, uh, this probably came about a few years ago, uh, when there were some issues with, uh, uh, bands being played in the non-residential area or commercial areas in town that were permitted and going past the hours of eleven o'clock, midnight, and so they moved it back to nine o'clock from, I think it used to be eleven o'clock, I think we talked about, Councilman. Sound trucks, of course, pretty much the same thing, and, and, uh, this one goes to nine PM. Most times, it's like, uh, those ice cream trucks, those things of that nature, after nine PM, in most residential areas, people want a opportunity to wind down and, and go to bed, so, that's, that makes sense in there. Type C in the parks, uh, I know that the, uh, band is out there, the municipal band is out there in the band shell, and there's events that are hosted out there, and we have had some issues with, uh, I think, events in the past, out in the, out in the park, that got kinda carried away with some loud music being heard later at night and had to go out and basically shut it down, cause it went past the hours of the permit. So, it does happen, so, uh, when, when we talk about that one, ten o'clock to eleven o'clock at night, and they tried to go past eleven o'clock and we shut the party down out there. So, um, it does happen. Uh, the last one is on, uh, school grounds, or in conjunction with school-sponsored activity from ten o'clock to eleven o'clock. Um, the amplified sound, I think they're dealing with here is maybe the football games, things of that nature, or if the band's playing later at night, some of those football games may run late, or they may have an event, whether it's the Drum and Bugle Chores in town, or something of that nature, uh, those things do happen, so they may have a permit for that. Okay, the sound variances that we, uh, uh, give, uh, it's basically like it says there, based on this chapter, uh, and one of the things that I wanted to point it out, point out here, uh, when you talk about providing this variance, is this unreasonable hardship on the applicant. Uh, I don't, I don't probably need to read it to you, y'all can read that, but the unreasonable hardship on the applicant, the community, or on other persons, um, I don't know what the unreasonable hardship would be for the business if it can't stay open past, or can't have a band pass nine o'clock to eleven for me to sign the variance. When it talks about, uh, the noise control officer here, I'm assuming, and I talked to the city manager, that, that he would probably designate that as me, being the, the, uh, noise control officer, and when that comes across my desk, I don't, I, I thought about what would be an unreasonable hardship, uh, to the business for me not allowing it go to, to go to eleven versus nine o'clock, according to the way the ordinance is written now. And I, I just can't come up with a, a valid reason for me to do that. So, as it reads now, nine o'clock's the cutoff time, so, uh, if, if, for me to sign that, I guess with, uh, being honest with myself and with you, uh, going past nine o'clock, I could waive it, if there was a, uh, you know, unreasonable hardship for that person, but, uh, I just can't, I can't figure that out, what it would be. So, um...
Appreciate your honesty.
If you wanna change the ordinance, I guess is, you can change the ordinance to reflect eleven o'clock, but for me to go outside of the bounds of that, to sign it and say...
Kinda puts you in a bad spot.
It would put me in a bad spot, saying, uh, you know, you're showing favoritism for this business, not mine, so, it would be easier, not just easier, but it would be more fair for it to be just across the board.
Agree.
Do we, should we have that removed, the unreasonable hardship? Should we just, I mean, what's the, I don't understand what the point is of even having that in there.
Well, I would, I would either suggest that, not necessarily to, to remove that, but to, uh, maybe go to eleven o'clock, or if you remove that portion of it, and then I could apply the one or more conditions. As you've seen with some of the other ordinances in other towns, they put some conditions and restrictions on that, some of them are needing like, uh, two complainants and verified complaints. We've been down that road for, uh, uh, dog ordinances, barking dogs before, and that's a difficult task and a, and very time-consuming for us, for a, a, uh, noise ordinance violation, or, you know, like when it was the barking dog, it was a difficult, uh, task for us to complete in a timely manner, and, as you know, there's a lot of other things that, that go on in this town besides barking dogs and noise ordinances, so, um, not that we can't do it, but we would be able to, if there's a violation, uh, of that past, like between nine and eleven o'clock, if we get a complaint, we would address it first with the business, then if we receive a second complaint, after that, we would go back and, and shut it down, would be the conditions that I would put on it. You know, first time there, where they'd get the warning, second time there, we would just shut it off, and, and it's done for the evening.
Shut the party down. Chief, are these, the same rules apply for community events, things like Steamboat Days or events that...
They could, we've, uh, we've received complaints before, uh, on the, the Steamboat Days, uh, but that provision in there for civic events and, uh, variances for that, um, because it is a city-wide or a community-wide event, is in there.
They're complaining about the, the sound, or the volume of the music?
From Steamboat Days, yeah.
And, and the fact it's going to two oh thirty.
Yeah, too late, yeah. We've received it in the past, not, not most recently, but, but, so, um, I guess if there's any questions, as, uh, hopefully that gives you kind of a, a breakdown of it, there's more, there's more details in there, but I didn't wanna get too lengthy, uh, with the presentation, just kinda hit the highlights and let you know where I was at. I can extend it past eleven with that, uh, unreasonable hardship explanation, and I'm open to, if somebody can identify that, that'd be great for me, and, uh, I'd use it, but with that in there, I don't know what the unreasonable hardship, other than the person wants to have entertainment past nine o'clock, uh, in the, in the, those, uh, districts, commercial districts. And as it stands, um, I know of at least one person that gets a sound permit that's not in a zoned, a commercially-zoned area, they're in a residential district, and that's awful difficult for me to sign that variance also, or that sound permit, when it's in that area. So, but I limit that also to, you know, if we get complaints, they know that if we come out and get complaints, we'll ask them to turn it down, the second time, we'll shut it down. But it would be nice to have it in there with an explanation, if we could put that in there, if that's what you wanna do, or leave it as is, and I just, uh, do put the[1773.47] the conditions on it, and say, this is the hardship for you, so I'm putting these conditions on it.
So, let's get to the, let's get to the core of it, what's going to make it, yeah, what's going to...
Okay, so I, I, I brought this up, I brought it up to chief a while ago, and the reason being is because I was concerned we're having more and more businesses open downtown, which is great, but there was a lot of misconception, whether, if they were on public ground or their private property, how late they could go, and whether they could, you know, if they deemed it as a fundraiser for a charity, they could go later without permission, I said, no, you got to get permission for everything. I, I do think that, whether it's 10:30, 10 or 11, I do see where businesses would benefit, and we as a community might, by allowing on Friday or Saturday nights going a little later, and that's what my goal was. I don't think Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, especially not Sunday, is what we want to do, but in those two nights, we would go a little later, and that's because of all the confusion from, okay, let's just say, I hang out at those places, and so, because of all the confusion from those, from the owners, that's why I asked chief to bring it up. So, I would, I would, I would think that, one, if I was going to say something, we remove that hardship line, that's unfair to you, unfair to anybody sitting in your position, but I would like to see us go from nine to 10:30, but I think...
On the weekends.
On the weekends, but I, 10:30, 11's up, what's up to the chief and us, if we're going to do that, but I do think it needs to be spelled out, that it's a strict policy, it is off at that time, because I know the incident that kind of brought this up, they were out there blasting away till almost 1:30 in the morning, and you can't do that.
I wouldn't be a fan of the 1:30 in the morning, but I don't see any reason why a business couldn't have a band until 11 o'clock at night, whether they're raising money for profit or nonprofit. I mean, if Steamboat Days has a carnival and they want to run that till midnight in order to be able to be financially viable, then that makes a lot of sense. That's a civic event, like you already hinted to, but...
We're talking just a week or just...
But I don't, I don't understand, I don't have a problem with a band playing until 11 o'clock, assuming, like you also alluded to, that it's not in the middle of a residential neighborhood.
Well, some of them, some of the commercial zones that, that, I won't name the businesses, but there's one that's right next to a residential area, and the event they have, even though there's zoned commercial, right, their real property line is a residential, it borders, it's right on that line.
Yeah, there's a couple of them, yeah.
Yeah, so I have, I have difficulty with that, because people want to have their, they're quiet at their residence, I want it at mine, and everybody else does too, so I understand that.
I like the idea of Burlington not rolling up the sidewalks at nine, is that still a valid statement anyway? And, um...
I don't want to, I don't want to overcomplicate...
Helping businesses, but I don't want to hinder the people that want to have apartments and stuff downtown, so that people don't want to live there because it's known as too noisy, because we did the terrain ordinance not too long ago.
Well, I would say that people, people assume the negative externalities associated with wherever they're living, same as a bar owner who opens a bar or an establishment in a residential neighborhood would assume the responsibility of the duties that come along with doing exactly that. If you're going to live in the downtown area above a restaurant or a bar or facility that regularly stays open until all hours in the evening, and puts on events like that, then you assume the risks that go along with that. Same as, like I said, you do a bar that opens up in a residential neighborhood, you're not going to be able to put on a concert until 11 o'clock at night, so, I mean, I think people make those decisions for themselves, I wouldn't want to limit an establishment's ability to profit or make money, or do whatever it is they need to do to stay, stay afloat.
But I do feel for those people in those neighborhoods that already reside there, and then we change the ruling on them, I think that's, that could cost some hardship for a few people. If you're moving in, knowing that upfront, that's one thing, but if we're changing it on him now, that's maybe a little different thing. So, I think we need to be cautious about the ones that border a high residential area right now, just to be careful.
Well, so is the compromise then 10, 10:30, or is 11 too late?
I'm cool with 11.
Okay.
I think 11's fine.
Yeah, I mean...
Just Friday, Saturday, right?
Yeah, just Friday, Saturday.
Yeah, this is just, okay, yeah, I'm cool with that.
And I also think we ought to eliminate the hardship line.
And I can, I can look at it...
Or adjust it, I mean, can you, can you tweak that so it's not...
My more, the, more of my concern is not the hardship on the business, is the hardship on the area around it. That's, you know, because, because if it, if you get to that area that I'm talking about, in the business that I'm talking is next to the residential area, but it's zoned commercial, which they can have that permit, or I can give them that permit or the variance, but they're trying to go to bed at 10 o'clock at night, and it says 11, how can I change that? So I, I'll, I'll look some more in there and come up with the wording I need for, so I can, I can effectively have my officers go out and say, you need to shut it off because it's too soon, or I can put it in the variance itself when I, when I do the sound permit, you can have it, but one complaint between nine and 11, we're going to come and advise you to shut it off because it's too much, and then...
Or if it's, if it's too loud, the, the decibel thing, to me, would be tough to prove, right? Because you would think, you would think the decibels, you know, because the latter, it's mostly, most of them, they use a sound and light guy, he knows what he can get away with that, without complaints, but when they're using their own sound and lights and they've never been there before, that's where the problems arise.
Right, and like I said, they need to be, try to be good neighbors, or like you said, they need to be good neighbors, and we have had them inside of taverns or bars in neighborhoods that have entertainment inside, and they open the doors when it's too hot, and it goes across those boundary lines, so...
Same thing.
Yeah, we've had that issue before.
Well, but one thing the, the decibel level standard does do, provides you a quantitative opportunity to determine whether or not something's too loud, otherwise it's always open to interpretation. One officer might hear something different than another officer, so.
Takes that ambiguity out of there, when, when they may say, you just don't like my type of music, you prefer, you know, R&B to country music or something, so.
That's right, I was jamming, I was jamming Baby Shark the other night, and I turned it up past 10 to 11, but Rhonda got mad, so I turned it down, I'm not going there.
If you was by the library, you'd be in violation. If you don't have any more questions, then we'll...
No, just make sure you're, yeah, make sure you're satisfied as well, and make sure you get the, that you're satisfied that you can take care of business when we do have people that don't want to comply, that's my biggest...
So, we're going to let him take a look at that line, see if he wants to change it, and then what do we need to do from there if we're in agreement about changing the time?
I can, I'll look at changing, what changes I would want to put in there, and you're saying 11 o'clock, and, and then potentially that...
But limit that to Friday and Saturday night, too.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then just tweak the language to whatever you feel like makes the most sense.
Well, that, Friday and Saturday night...
Doesn't do any good for you, so.
Yeah, that Friday and Saturday night may be an issue when you talk about certain holidays that fall on a Tuesday.
I got you.
Or that they want some entertainment there, maybe.
Like 4th of July or something.
Yeah, and I, like I said, if, a little more latitude, I think, on, on allowing certain things to be written into that variance, and drilling that down, so.
What if you just don't limit it to certain days, but just do a case-by-case basis? Because they have to apply for it regardless.
Or use the variance to eliminate the...
And leave it up to, leave it up to your judgment to determine whether or not the day or the date is appropriate given the circumstances, just a case-by-case basis.
It's not just my judgment, because I won't be here forever, but...
Yeah.
Yeah, but can you use the variances to kind of eliminate anyways, use the variances to eliminate...
So we leave it up to the chief's discretion.
Yes.
I think, Matt, we were trying to get away from them having to do a special permit all the time, by doing, by sending us out.
They can do, they can do an annual permit, but if they want an exception to that, we could have them come and reissue that permit, I'm assuming, is that right, Jim? I would assume that that would be, that's what I would recommend, if they called me.
You're beyond my pay range.
So, I guess that is a good question, chief, so, if they're going to have an outdoor event, even if they stop at nine, 9:30, they still need to have a permit?
Sorry, I wasn't trying to get you.
If they have an outdoor event, music-wise.
I'm sorry, I...
If they have an outdoor event, and say it goes from 5:30 to 9:30, they still need to have a permit, is that correct?
Yeah, and they can get an annual permit, that would, that would allow them to have that, but if they want to go outside of what's on the annual permit, they would have to come down and apply for another special event application, and then have that go through. Let's say, for instance, they want to have it past 11 o'clock, or, or some other, something else outside of that annual permit.
Is the annual kind of like a quarterly permit, or how long is the annual one last for?
A year.
Yeah, every calendar year, yeah.
A year?
But that's, perhaps that's the way to do it, is just limit it to Friday, Saturday, and then have a special permit, permit process for those days that don't fall on a Friday, Saturday.
Well, I think I can, you know, if somebody comes to me in the middle of the week and wants to have an event, and there's, it's not on like a holiday, let's say like St. Patrick's Day or something like that, I would probably have some questions as to what, what's going on that you want to have this.
Well, especially during, especially if it ends at like nine, or before, well before the time.
Right, right, because they could want a band, you know, for somebody's, whatever, a private...
5:30 to 7:30, and...
Right, and it wouldn't be an issue.
Now, Jim, do we need a public hearing on this, or no?
I don't, this, this is an ordinance change, I'm not sure if this one requires a public hearing or not, I... It's, it's a three reading, but I'm not sure if, this one I don't think would require a public hearing, but still three readings on an ordinance.
Do what we got to do.
Yep, sounds good.
So, the question there, and you're saying traditionally we've had public hearings, but when, when we did our new council policies, we changed the ordinance readings to be, to match what's in state code. The state code, state code establishes requirements for different types of things to have hearings. I don't think this falls within the area that requires it, but that's one we check on.
Any other questions for the chief?
Thanks, chief, very well done.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, our last discussion item is appointments. Everybody good? Mr. Anker, you're serving.
I, continuously.
Okay, hard serve, soft serve, ice cream, whatever it takes. Mr. T.
Just a reminder of our rededication, ribbon cutting tomorrow at White Park, Deedwin and Gladys White Memorial Park, at Fifth and Angular Street at 4:00 PM. We'll have quite a few individuals there, and certainly welcome all the council members and anyone from the public that can attend that tomorrow at 4:00.
Is that it, man? So where'd you get that sheet that you put, from the top, from the bottom, or from the middle?
Middle.
I got a figure, peanut butter.
Yeah, the park looks really nice, if you haven't been out there, be sure and stop by that tomorrow, check it out. Also, coming up tomorrow, which is September 10th, at 7:00 PM, the Capitol Theater, is the Paris of Pittsburgh National Geographics Documentary on Climate Change, so I encourage you to check that out, I think that will be really eye-opening. So, Paris of Pittsburgh, Capitol Theater, 7:00 PM, the Monite.
Bless you. Counselor.
You know what, we've had, we've had a rough week, Burlington, and we need to, we need to settle down, you know, citizens, if you see something that, that you're suspicious of, calling in, don't hesitate, and hopefully, hopefully we'll, some cooler heads will prevail here in the next couple of weeks.
And PT.
Got nothing tonight, thank you.
I don't accept that, so say something. Well done. I appreciate your, I don't accept that. Counselor.
The Burlington Bees wrapped up their season last week, or week for last, I forgot to mention it, so I wanted to say that. I know that this year they had a, an increase in attendance, and community support was up significantly, so I want to say thank you to the citizens of Burlington and the surrounding area for, for, again, supporting the local team. Also, go Hawks, Trivory Week. Did you guys notice, what was that team that lost this weekend, just got, it was amazing, they were up like big, and then they fell, oh!
Did they start with an end?
Nebraska, Nebraska lost, like a 24-point lead or something, I mean, it was pretty, yeah, it was pretty amazing, anyways.
Frost warning.
So, go Hawks.
Is frost trading?
Yeah.
Frost, frost warning.
Big red down, I think was the, the tagline, so. Nick, do you have anything for us?
He's speechless. James?
I don't have anything, I get to do the radio this week.
And James, say hi to me. He just got his raise, he doesn't talk to me for at least three to four months afterwards, so anyways, this'll be a nice quiet time in my life. I think that's it for tonight, thanks everybody that came and watched at home, and we'll see you next week, good night.